Good afternoon. I don't often have to use my gavel. Good afternoon and welcome to the September meeting of the Delmar College Board of Regents. It is 1:00 PM on Tuesday, September 10th, and I'm calling this meeting to order. I'm going to call roll to establish a quorum. Dr. Babaly, Mr. Loeb, Mr. Garza, Dr. Adami, Ms. Everett here, Mr. Kelly, Mr. Kruehl. I'm Carol Scott. We have a quorum and can conduct business. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you very much. Mr. Kelly, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Please join me in pledging allegiance to our flag and country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And please join us in reading our Delmar College Vision Statement. "Delmar College empowers our communities to achieve their dreams." Thank you. "Delmar College is streaming our live audio and video from the official Board of Regents meetings on the college's website in real time, with exception, portions of the meeting considered as closed session by statute." At this time, we have an opportunity for anyone to address the board under general public comment for items not included on our agenda. Is there anyone here to address the board today? Seeing none, we will move on to our recognitions. We have a number of recognitions today, and we're going to start asking Dr. John DeHalcum to please introduce Kristi Urbek.
Madam Chair Regents, Dr. Eskamia, I'm pleased to announce that Assistant Professor of Kinesiology, Kristi Urbek, has successfully completed her EDD and Community College Leadership from Kansas State University conferred on August 9th, 2024. Her dissertation was entitled "Exploring the Lives, Academic, and Social Experiences of Female Student Athletes Who Graduated from Texas Community Colleges." Community colleges play an essential role in providing student athletes with the opportunity to continue to pursue athletics and go to college. Female student athletes have unique academic and social experiences that can influence their retention and degree completion. The findings indicated that community colleges are an important option for female student athletes to continue participating in athletics and attend college. The participants in her study reported having positive relationships with coaches, teammates, other athletes, and faculty. These relationships positively influenced their social and academic experiences, which helped the participants integrate into the college and obtain an associate's degree. The Kansas State John E. Roush Center for Community College Leadership is what where she attended is designed to promote an innovative approach to a doctorate degree for those seeking to enhance their leadership competence in leading transformation at community colleges and provide leadership. Dr. Urbek has demonstrated strong instructional leadership since joining Delmar College as an instructor and intramural director in 2016, and she was promoted to Assistant Professor in 2020. She began serving as Chairperson of the Department of Education and Kinesiology in 2022 and is beginning this fall a term serving as Chair of Chairs Council. Her many leadership skills have enabled her to make significant contributions to numerous institutional committees and to connect to our students and help them navigate through college. She has an Associate's Degree in Liberal Studies, a Bachelor's Degree in Physical Education, a Master's in Kinesiology, and now a Doctorate. So please join me in congratulating Dr. Kristi Urbek on receiving her Doctorate.
Thank you so much, Dr. Halcom. I just wanted to start by saying thank you to everyone that supported me. I could not have done this by myself. It was very challenging, I will say that. I don't necessarily want to ever go back to school. But it was definitely an experience. And we have some people here that I just want to recognize my kinesiology group over here. Thank you. We also have some of my cohort members over here as well that really helped me out. So raise your hand up there. I also just want to thank my family and everyone that was there to support me. This really was a great accomplishment, something that was definitely not easy. And this college really was the gave me the opportunity. I guess I could move this. Yeah, okay. Yeah, there we go. Really gave me the opportunity and the vision to really make this through. And I know, Dr. Eskamia, I went through the same program as him, and he was definitely instrumental in getting me to sign up because it, you know, definitely comes at a cost, both money and time. And so it was definitely an investment that I'm happy that I did, but I am more than glorious that it's over. And yeah, so that is it. Thank you so much.
Congratulations. We're so proud of all the work that has been done to continue to develop our faculty. So thank you very much for your work on that, Dr. Eskamia, and thank you to the cohort members because I know that there's that support is so very important to all of you. So congratulations, Dr. Urbek. Now we have Dr. Patricia Benavides Dominguez to do three different presentations for us.
Well, continuing with academic celebrations, I'd like for you to help me congratulate Dr. Sarah King, Director of our Student Engagement and Retention. She successfully completed her program of study in June with receiving her earning her PhD in Higher Ed Education Administration from Texas Tech University. The title of her dissertation was "Raising the 2%, A Narrative Inquiry Study Exploring Hispanic Teen Mother's Sense of Belonging" at a South Texas college. We are so proud of Sarah, and I'm sure she's also very elated to be done with her academic program of study. Sarah, would you, Dr. King, would you please come?
I'm absolutely elated to be done. And just to follow Dr. Urbek's statement, I just wanted to thank everyone here at Delmar College who encouraged me, who checked in on me, who constantly reminded me of what I was capable of when I forgot. My deans that I've worked under who pushed me and assisted me as best that I could, all the different offices that I worked with throughout my program, more than just my dissertation, but for my classes as well. And then all the leadership and opportunities that Delmar College, Dr. Eskamia, has fostered for me to be able to participate in. So, and yes, I am never doing this again, so thank you.
Congratulations, Dr. King. And it is such a great example for our students and for all of our faculty and staff to see each and every one of you who continue to invest this kind of time in your development, for all of us to understand that learning doesn't stop. Yes, you may not ever go for another degree, but the example that learning does not stop. So just congratulations and thank you all for being such great role models in that regard. Dr. Dominguez?
Next, we have another great staff member in the Student Support Services area, Beverly Cage. She is the Director, Beverly. Come here. Beverly is the Director of Student Leadership and Campus Life, and she has been selected to be on the West Oso ISD Foundation Board. Ms. Cage's role will be the VP of Events and Marketing, and we are so happy to have a higher ed voice on that foundation board. And we know that she will do an excellent job representing all higher ed in the community.
Thank you, Dr. Dominguez, and welcome, I'm sorry, welcome. Thank you for having me here. I'm just elated to be on this board. I am a graduate of West Oso High School, and we wanted to be able to provide opportunities for students as well as teacher grants for the teachers that are there who want to inspire the students to continue their education and come to Delmar College. So I'm just happy to be a representative.
Thank you so much.
And I have brochures.
Yes, absolutely. Y'all got it? There we go. You have to do your job, and you do it well. Congratulations, thanks, Beverly.
While she's passing it around, I had lunch with the superintendent Moore last couple weeks ago or so, and we had a very nice, long lunch in talking about the importance of West Oso to our community and especially to with our relationship with regards to our relationship with Delmar College. I promised to double down on everything that we could possibly do within reason and so forth, and she totally understands that. Already, the team is activated and moving towards that. Beverly, your time now dedicating to your alma mater right down the street from us is going to be critical, and I look forward to working very closely with you and their foundation to advance their cause.
Thank you, and thank you, Dr. Eskamia. I don't know why I'm nervous because I love to talk.
I was kind of wondering, Beverly, but...
This is very important to me, so thank you, Dr. Eskamia, for all your support.
Thank you. Congratulations.
And last but not least, Ms. Cheryl Sanders, the Associate Vice President for Student Affairs, went to a Texas Pathways Conference in the spring, and she applied on behalf of the college to participate in the Meadows Mental Health Policy Seminar, the Meadows Institute, Minding College Mind's Post-Secondary Mental Health Learning Community, which is offered in partnership with the Texas Success Center. And we are proud to announce that Delmar has been selected to be in the inaugural cohort of that study.
Yes, we are so excited to be a part of this learning community, and there are seven other members of the team, and a few of them are in the room if you want to wave. They are all passionate about mental health, and we know how important focusing on mental health is here at our college. It's important everywhere, but here at the college, this provides us an opportunity to engage with peer institutions and share best practices and learn so that we can improve our mental health strategy here at the college. So we're excited.
Congratulations. Thank you. And we're going to bring Dr. Halcom back up for one more.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm pleased to announce that Elena Rodriguez, Manager of Recruitment and Engagement for the Department of Art and Drama, received the Corpus Christi Under 40 Award. Wish I were still there, I'm sorry. Wish I was under 40. This is a prestigious recognition that honors individuals who have made significant contributions to Corpus Christi and excelled in their professional careers before reaching the age of 40. Being recognized with this award is a testament to a person's leadership, activism, volunteerism, and the impact they've had on the community. For Delmar College, having a faculty or staff member like Elena recognized with this award highlights the college's commitment to fostering excellence and leadership within the community. Elena is a deserving candidate for the Corpus Christi Under 40 Award, not only for her work at Delmar College, but also for her leadership and volunteerism outside the college. At Delmar College, she coordinates outreach for potential drama students, creates content for websites and social media accounts, and manages the marketing for the Art and Drama Department. Her role as Director of the Rockport Film Festival, Rockport Center of the Arts Curator of Exhibitions, Board Member of the Corpus Christi Art Center, and involvement with numerous other cultural and arts organizations demonstrate her dedication to enhancing the culture of the Coastal Bend. Elena's accolades, such as being featured in Glass Tire's Top Five Art Show and receiving honorable mentions at exhibitions, further highlighting her influence and achievements in the arts. Her continual contribution to art is further demonstrated through her participation in displaying her artwork that will be part of the Target Texas at an exhibition at the Art Museum in South Texas that opens next week. Elena's recognition with this award is a celebration of her contributions to both Delmar College and the Coastal Bend community. Please join me in congratulating Elena Rodriguez.
All right, I want to say thank you, Dr. Halcom, for the recognition. Thank you to the board. I really appreciate it, and it is a huge honor to get this recognition from you guys. And it's also a big honor to be part of Delmar College. I've been here about a year, and I can say I've never been more proud of any place I've ever worked. It is a joy to work with the Art and Drama Department. I love the faculty, I love the students, the facilities are fantastic, and it's just a joy to come to work every single day. While I have the mic, I do want to officially to invite you guys to some of the drama productions we have going on this semester. We've got one in October, one in November. We have 23 drama majors this semester, six are on scholarship, and they all like they do everything in the productions, from building the sets, to the lighting, to the costumes, to everything. And we're really proud of them, and I know you'll be really impressed by their work this semester. Thank you.
Congratulations, Elena. Elena, you may not know that Delmar College's history in music and arts and drama is just is so rich in this community. I think there's a number of us, I will speak for myself, my first introduction to Delmar College was at the Music Building as a UIL band student coming in for a competition. How many people did that, right? And so just there is such a rich history of community involvement at Delmar College and support, and so congratulations, and know that you carry a legacy that touches just about every household in Corpus Christi and the region.
Thank you.
All right. Great work, all of you. Makes us proud to sit up here and allow these recognitions or allow a forum for these recognitions to take place. It's a great way to start our meeting, and so thank you, faculty and staff, for continuing to bring us examples of outstanding work at Delmar College. Speaking of outstanding work, we're going to ask our college president to give his report.
So my report's not near as fun, I'm sorry. But I do want to share with you that both on the August 22nd and the 27th, there was there were two strategic planning sessions that the Texas Association of Community College has taken on to revamp and prepare for the future, for the foreseeable future of the collection, as it relates to the collection of 50 community colleges. The collective of 50 community colleges, pardon me, that's important, and I've been a part of it, and I've been able to chime in on that strategic direction as we prepare the blueprint for the future. It's what we do here. I'm happy to say that our processes and so forth were referred to prior to these planning sessions, so people watch what we're doing as well because some of the consultants that we've used here are have their fingerprints all over those planning processes as well. So, but that's what occurred over the month of August. It's a really short report, so I'm going to take an opportunity to go a little bit off script and just kind of give a quick commercial that we're going to be preparing an enrollment report for next month. And I don't, you know, while the information's really sizzling out there, if you will, I wanted to share with you that, you know, the preliminary indications for enrollment for the fall is very reflective of kind of this, it's very much in sync with what we've referred to as a reset year for the college, as we've been talking about from the budgetary standpoint. So likewise with enrollment, there's been a reset of sorts, and let me just say that enrollment is rebounding considerably from last year's, from this point of last year. And we're currently seeing preliminary numbers of both credit and continuing education, which are synonymous anymore because of the state of Texas and how they positioned us, and we are seeing numbers of slightly over 12% of combined enrollment from last year this time. And I'm able to say that with confidence because we've been scrubbing those numbers on a daily basis. And so that speaks to a couple of things. There's certainly some environmental things going on. We cannot take credit for the good weather necessarily, but at the same time, our team has been working doubly hard and extremely diligently in receiving this occurrence that's going on in our economy and our, and as it relates to our statewide as well as our city. So stay tuned. I just had to give this early commercial on that, and enrollment is just making things very, very exciting, and I can't wait for the full report and the full update in next month's meeting. That concludes my report. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions for Dr. Eskamia? Thank you so much, and thank you for that preview. Just it's like a teaser for, you know, coming soon movie, for the blockbuster to come or something, right?
They want to watch the press here in the next couple of days, too.
Going on to our staff reports, Dr. Patricia Benavides Dominguez is going to come back up, and she'll be joined by Gracie Martinez to talk about the Perkins State Leadership Grant.
Well, hello, Madam Chair, Dr. Eskamia Regents. Today, I am happy to announce that...
She's dancing behind you, sorry. Gracie's dancing behind you. All right.
That we received a two-year grant that Dean Gracie Martinez wrote and submitted to the Higher Education Coordinating Board, and we successfully got it. It's for a little over almost $200,000, $174,000. And the highlights of the grant is that we will get to hire one outreach person, and our emphasis is going to be concentrating with eighth graders, particularly 13 middle schools in the Sandpat and Oasis County area, three particular ISDs, Corpus Christi GP, and Flower Bluff. And the whole idea is to promote access to the career and tech high school programs that we offer here and foster a sense of belonging and support to eighth graders and their families. And I'm going to turn it over to Gracie to explain the other details.
Thank you. Now you can dance with me. As mentioned by VP Dominguez, the Viking Pathway, this is what it's called, will target middle school students and their parents to showcase CTE opportunities offered by Delmar College. When asked why this grant is different, well, the answer is we're going to provide opportunities to those who think that college is not possible. We want to support students who do not feel supported at home and who are challenged, and to reach out to all students without focusing solely on those top 25%. We want to get everybody. So how are we going to do this? Well, my answer is it takes a village. So that's, we're going to start off with connection. Connection is we're going to connect students and parents to those people on our campus. We're going to bring awareness, highlight the benefits of all the advantages from starting college early. Completing a certificate can really impact and change the family dynamics. That's how we're going to do it. And finally, the mission for our village, my village, is to continue our mission of creating lifelong learners in our community. So through the Viking Pathway, we'll do this one student at a time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Lots of applause today. Before you leave, I want to see if Mr. Garza has any comments.
He's going to dance.
This particular award of some monies to be able to go out and do what we want to do is great. I mean, I just think that to be able to reach our student population in the ISDs is critical to be able to, for us to achieve the numbers that we need to achieve with the state's asking us to graduate more students and credential more students. And the only way you're going to do that is if we're able to get them engaged earlier in their ISD efforts to be able to graduate. So again, if they come to us college-ready, they have a better chance of graduating. So again, Gracie, thank you so much. Thank you, staff, everybody that participated and helped us get this thing because I think that's going to be the key to being able to get what we need to get. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Just to give you, next month, we, October 3rd, we are, last year we had the Viking Voyager, and last year we had a little over 230 students come to visit all our three campuses. This year, CCISD is bringing us a little over 400 students, October 3rd. And October 24th, with Dean Sharamick, we are hosting our first Viking Healthcare Awareness. They will, 150 students will be coming in from all 10 CCISD, and they will be visiting all 10 programs for our healthcare. So we are going to be close to 600 students in October that we will be hosting at our campus, just middle school only, eighth graders. So that's great.
Great work. Thank you very much. Appreciate all that. We're going to move on to our Board Policy Review Schedule. Ms. McDonald, it is our Board Policy to look at all these every five years, and we ask Tammy to help us stay organized and make sure that that happens.
Thank you, Chair. So this is our schedule. Like the chair just mentioned, we do have our chapters on a schedule to be reviewed at a minimum of every five years, of course, so more often if it's needed. So for this year, for fiscal year '25, we have chapters, going to the next. For '25, our review schedule, we were, chapter eight was set to review last year, but we know that we were going to have some work. It's labeled miscellaneous, so we're working toward defining it better, and this is what we're going to, I'm going to say, transform into the policies and administrative procedures for security, the police department, safety, emergency management. So we have some policy work that will be coming forward, also IT security. So that's, we're going to repurpose that chapter and be bringing that to you throughout the year. Chapter nine is prohibiting sexual misconduct. We had brought, that was scheduled to be on the Board of Gender a couple of months ago because there were some changes to Title IX, but those were paused. So we put that revision on pause, so we'll see how long that stays paused or if it moves forward or not. So that one could be coming back to you. And then chapter 10 is our carrying handguns on campus by license holder. We really review this every year because we do have to update what we call our prohibited locations list, but we'll be bringing it back to you because it is part of our formal review this year. Then anything else that will come forward, of course, as required, policies that are impacted by changes in laws, statutes, regulations, and requirements that are executed at a state, federal, local, and our crediting bodies sometimes, too. So any work that, or of course, anything that comes at the request of Dr. Eskamia or the Board. But this is our proposed schedule for this year. Our timeline, so September, October, November, we're going to be reviewing and assessing the policies and the chapters that are on the schedule. I do anticipate that December will be the first round of policy assessments to the Board of Regents and thereafter for the remainder of '25, as needed and as required. So we'll assess them, so as we assess them, if we bring them to you, and the recommendation could be a revision, it could be no revisions are needed. That's what the assessment could be. Any questions?
I have a question on the miscellaneous, chapter eight. So are you going to rename that?
Yes, we'll be bringing it to you to rename, take away miscellaneous. It really doesn't tell anyone what they could find there. But if you do look at some of the adminis, it has more administrative processes than policies, but the B policies, but we do need to put some in place. Some of it is coming out of some of our advisory work with Weaver to do with safety and security. So we, and then we do have some IT security policy work that we're working on with Ally and his team. So that's more where that will be, the link to our emergency operations plan that we're required to have, that will be in that chapter. So we are, yes, ma'am, we're going to be renaming it for those types of policies and procedures.
And are there policies in miscellaneous that need to get moved out to other chapters?
Right now, no. It primarily did have administrative procedures to do with like hurricane preparedness, and but that we're moving into click the emergency operations plan to look at it so we don't have to go five different places every time we might change something. We have a single source, which would be the emergency operation plan, and then we just put the link to it instead of having to go change that document in five different places. So for the most part, there will be some revisions, but we're also going to be like, does this really belong here, or is it a link to the master document, or is it something that's outdated? And there will be some additions, some recommended additions to those topics.
Any questions or other comments for the Board? These are our policies, so as we, as you move forward, if you want to familiarize yourself with them as they exist today, so that when they come forward, you've already done that review, you're welcome to do those, those are all online. If you have any questions between now and December, when they start rolling out to us, please let Dr. Eskamia, Delia, Ms. McDonald know, and they can answer any questions that you might have. that you might have. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
We don't have any board notifications this meeting. Let's look at our pending business list. In October, we'll have a large report, a number of reports, I should say, talking about the coordinating board strategic plan. We'll see our quarterly financial and investment reports. We will have an internal audit report, and so you can expect some additional time there. And we do have the report on the Cleary Act as well as our Title VI required reports. And then in November, enrollment, so do you think enrollment going to be October, November?
We're planning for October.
Gotcha. So that might come back early, okay. All right. Any questions about our pending items?
Just really quickly, follow up on that. It was November last year because of the transition. Things are solidifying, so unless otherwise, there's a reason why we will need to move it to November, we don't think that's the case. We think we're ready to go. Dean, Vice President Benavides and I were just talking about that. We think we'll be ready to go in October, and we're planning on that.
Great.
Thank you.
All right. If there's no questions on a pending business item, we'll move on to our consent agenda. We have consent agenda items, minutes, acceptance of investment and financial reports. Do any of those items need to be pulled for separate consideration? Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented?
No motion.
Motion by Dr. Adami, second by Dr. Babaly. Any questions or comments on the motion? Is there any public comment on the consent agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor of adoption of the consent agenda, please raise your hand. All opposed, same sign. That motion passes unanimously. We'll move on to our regular agenda, and we'll start with Mr. Strabos. Hey, for once, you're at the top of the regular agenda rather than leaving you for the end.
We have good news.
We have--
Not that we have bad news on the others, but we have really good news.
John, you showed your cards, man.
Now we know the key.
It's all for the public. There's nothing to hide here.
Mr. Strabos, agenda item--
So we have an interlocal agreement with the city of Corpus Christi and for Oso Creek and the use of that land. The Police Training Academy has substantial completion. The city's planning the ribbon-cutting ceremony. I don't have specific dates on that. The next part of that is the police substation. And as part of that overall process, Delmar College has the official design approval. And we'll have a presentation by Turner Ramirez Architects, Jay Porterfield, where he'll go through the design of the project. Jay.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Okay, so I was here a few months ago, and we did a little fly-through and walkthrough of the substation project you see here.
Did you introduce yourself for those in the audience? Everybody's lots and lots of eyes watching you, so just kind of just start.
Okay, I'm sorry. My name is Jay Porterfield. I'm with Turner Ramirez Architects. I'm the project manager for the police substation projects. So, let's see. As Mr. Strabos mentioned, Delmar College has provided property at the southwest corner of the Oso Creek campus for this police substation. You see it there on the bottom left corner. And what we are intending to do is come in with a new driveway off of Yorktown Boulevard. You see here kind of right there towards the middle of the screen, and that will stop just past our building and with turnout to be continued later on to extend further into the campus or cut across towards the Police Training Academy. And we also, we're putting in a second driveway off of Yorktown Boulevard that's 100% primarily for the police substation use. Both driveways will be likely used by the city. We have 25 public parking spaces that come off of the larger driveway, and then we have about 60 secure parking spaces that are behind a fenced-in enclosure. Fencing will be similar to what the city currently has at the Flower Bluff substation, which is basically like a wrought iron looked fence. It's not a chain link fence. We will be extending utilities from just east of the RTA bus stop. We have water line and gas line that we'll be extending down Yorktown and then into our property. And then we have sanitary sewer, which will be routed north towards a new sanitary sewer that was installed sometime back along the back of the Delmar property. So the floor plan of the building, we're looking at about 7,300 square feet. I think the biggest change since the last time you saw it is we added a UTV and bicycle storage room. I don't recall if that was in the plan the last time you saw it. That was requested by the city because they use four-wheel vehicles and lots of bicycles for some of their neighborhood patrols, and they wanted a good interior place to store those. So it's basically like a garage. We have secure entries from all the exterior doors. They're access controlled, and then we have several other doors within the building that are electronic access control. The floor plan consists mostly of some offices, conference room, briefing room. We have lockers and showers for the officers and several restrooms. There's also a work area and a break room. So here are some of the exterior views. We intend to use the same color brick that is currently installed on the Police Training Academy. We're also introducing another material to differentiate some of the volume of the building and create some visual interest. It's a fiber cement panel that has a wood grain look to it. We also have canopies that project off of the front of the building to provide shade along the storefront and the entry to sort of work with these triple columns, very similar motif to what's also on the Police Chain Academy to accentuate the entrance to the This is a view towards the public parking area. This is what people will see when they get out of their cars and walk up to the building. The Police Shield logo that you see there, the signage, that's actually going to change to the city's round seal, but we will still maintain the Police Shield logo on the other face of the building that faces towards Yorktown. Again, you see the same color brick that's on the Police Academy and then that the wood grain look fiber cement panel. And the fiber cement panel, it's not your typical hardy panel you might think of real thin. This is like 5/8 of an inch thick. It's substantial material. You see there, that's this is kind of the secure side of the building, the garage door for the UTV and bicycle storage there on the right, and then that covered area is one of the back doors, back exits out of the building. Excuse me. It's another view of the building. You see the garage door there again, and the storefront you see on the right-hand side, that's looks out from the briefing room. It's a large seminar-style room that will look out towards Yorktown Boulevard. And again, this is the side that faces Yorktown. So this is the public side of the building. This is what you'll see as you drive down Yorktown. That's about all I have.
Do we have questions? Mr. Krul.
A couple of questions. One, are those driveways going to require median cuts in the Yorktown median?
There's already a median cut right in front of the the new driveway.
Does that align with the entrance into Billwitt Park?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So you're not going to plan on a median cut for the--
That second driveway?
Second driveway.
Not at this time.
Okay. Second question I have, are there facilities for women here for the restrooms and showers and so on?
So, excuse me, on the floor plan, we have not designated a men's or women's. They're all single-use facilities, each of the restroom, the toilets, and should we get back to the floor plan here? So each of the restrooms in the building, there's one in the public area, and there are three in we call the back-of-the-house area that are officers only. Two of them are in the locker shower area, and all of them are single-use, single-occupant restrooms. So there is not one necessarily designated as female versus male. However, we can change, you know, put signage that designates one for female--
So the locker room is just open?
Yeah, well, the intent was for them not to be changing clothes in the locker room. That's where they store their clothing and their gear. And the locker shower areas are large enough to have changing facilities within those rooms.
Okay.
That was the intent.
Any other questions?
I had one. I just forgot it.
What do they anticipate the public use of this building? Tell me what, how does the public, because the 25 spaces and the interior spaces, do folks come in and report crimes? Are you coming in to be interviewed as a victim? Tell me, do you have a sense of how they use, what's the public interaction with a space?
My understanding is, yes, part of what you just said, where people can come in to report something, come in to interview, but they may hold public functions there. They could possibly use it for public meetings. That's one of the reasons we provided a door directly to the exterior from the briefing room so that if they do have public meetings, they don't have to go through all the secure doorways just to get back to the briefing room. They could use the exterior entrance and go directly in if that's the way they would like to operate. But officers, the officers will use this building. They'll come here before the shifts, and then they they change, they do what they need to do, and then they go out to their patrols, and they come back to file their reports and do that sort of work. And then I would imagine if they have the public that needs to come in as part of those reports, they would be using the public parking area and come in the front door like that.
Is it, and then my last question is, is it 24 hours occupied with--
That's my understanding.
Yes. I found my, I found my thought. So do I understand it correctly that this is, this will have the largest capacity of all substations for CCPD?
Yes, sir.
That's an important thing. That was a very big deal. I know there's recent press about the three that are out there, the three newest substations, those that are built and those that have not been, are still to be built like this.
Right, so there's there's one in Flower Bluff that was an existing building they were sharing with another department. They renovated that building, and this one is bigger than the Flower Bluff facility. There is a second one that we designed, the sister building to this one that will be going into West Guth Park.
Oh, wow. Okay.
So the intent with the hope that the bonds pass, they'll be building both at the same time.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I've got one more question. On irrigation, I know John's had some comments about extending the water reuse line to provide reuse water for irrigation. Is there a possibility for the college and the city to jointly work on that so that the irrigation system for this facility and the police training facility and the college to be irrigated with reuse water?
We're in discussions with the city now about that process and in some type of agreement. And I guess there's two different parts. One is just the design and construction of that line, and the city is open to dialogue about sharing in that partnership. And whether or not they use the recycled water at their facilities is a separate but related discussion as well. So yes, sir, we're in discussion with the city on those agreements.
Well, it would also benefit Billwitt Park across the street, too.
Yes, sir, yes. And the route we're proposing does go through Billwitt Park, through the front road there. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Remind us, what is the term of our lease with the city for these two pieces of property?
It's 50 years with an option to renew for another 50 years.
Okay.
$10 a year or something like that?
Yes. Yes, $10 a year. And this police station is on the city of Corpus Christi, the November bond election.
Well, I just want to say that that our, I think this is a great example of public entities working together to maximize the resources available to our taxpayers, to our joint taxpayers. So thank you for for bringing this, continue to working with the city and bringing this forward. And I'll ask the question in public that I ask during our our agenda review. Mr. Strabos, you're comfortable with these plans and representing Delmar College, you're good to go?
I am. I called Turner Ramirez Architects and said they have to show that these plans are the plans that Delmar's going to be happy with, met with them personally, and yes, we went through the plans. Yes.
Great. We do require action from the board to approve these 100% construction documents for the substation. Is there a motion to that effect? Make a motion by Dr. Kelly, a second by Mr. Babaly. Is there any discussion on that motion? Any additional questions? Is there any public comment on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed, same sign. Dr. Babaly, did you raise your hand or not? Yes, I'm sorry. I just wanted to make sure that we, before I said unanimous, that we have a unanimous approval of that. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Porterfield, for being here.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity.
All right, the next item on our agenda, Ms. Jessica Alanice is going to come forward, and we're going to have a potential to cancel our election for our Board of Regents so that we can save $175,000.
Yes, ma'am. Good afternoon, Madam Chair and Dr. Eskamia Regents. On August 13th, the Board of Regents approved the order to call for the 2024 Board of Regents General Elections to take place on November 5th, 2024. Election packets were made available online and in person during the filing period from July 22nd to August 19th. Deadline to submit applications was on August 19th by 5:00 PM. After receipt and verification of all applications, the following individuals have been confirmed for each respective district position. District 1, Rudy Garza Jr., District 3, Bill Kelly, and at-large, Ananda Babaly. No other applications or write-in declarations were received by the filing deadline. So with that said, per Texas Election Code Section 2.051, a political subdivision is allowed to cancel an election if each candidate is unopposed in all single-member and at-large district races. So in order to begin this process, as the district's election administrator, I'm required to present to the board the certification of unopposed candidates for Delmar College District Board of Regents General Election for November 5th, 2024. This certification not only declares each candidate as unopposed in the respective races, but it also serves to declare that each candidate is hereby elected to the respective district. The newly elected candidates may not take office or cannot take office or begin their new term until after the prescribed canvassing period has begun, which is on November 8th. Now that the candidates have been declared elected, the board must begin steps to cancel the general election by indicating their vote on the enclosed order. A copy of this order, the approved order, will be posted on election day at each polling place in accordance with Texas Election Code. So Madam Chair, I ask that the following order be considered for the board's approval to cancel the general election.
Thank you, Ms. Alanice. So Delmar, the order is that Delmar College hereby cancels the election scheduled to be held on November 5th, 2024 in accordance with Section 2.053A of the Texas Election Code. And the following candidates have been certified as unopposed and hereby elected as follows: Rudy Garza, District 1; Bill Kelly, District 3; and Ananda Babaly, at-large. Is there a motion to adopt that order?
No motion.
Motion by Dr. Adami, second by Mr. Loeb. Is there any discussion on that motion? Congratulations, gentlemen. All those in favor of this, oh, excuse me, wait, is there any public comment on that motion?
I did have a comment.
Comment, Mr. Loeb? Yes, sir.
I just wanted to point out historically that Dr. Babaly is now the first South Asian to be elected to public office in our community.
Well, congratulations.
Good for us.
Good for us. That's exactly right. Good for us. And I don't see any public comment on that motion. So therefore, all those in favor of this motion, please raise your hand. Any opposed, same sign. Dr. Babaly, you're not raising your hand. That motion passes unanimously. And so I will sign this order, and Dr. Adami, as the vice chair, will sign this order as well, and we will provide that to you, Ms. Alanice. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Before we consider item number six, the board is going to go into closed session because we do have some questions or we need to have a little bit of discussion because this is new law, and there are some some questions related to the nomination of candidates for the appraisal district. So at this time, the board is going to go into closed session under Texas Government Code 551.071, consultation with legal counsel, Texas Government Code 551.074A1, personnel matters, and Texas Government Code 551.089, deliberation regarding IT security devices or audits. And the time is 1:49 PM. All right, the board has come back from closed session at 2:52 PM. We are going to go back to agenda item number six and have discussion and possible action related to the nomination of candidates for the appraisal district board. Mr. Rivera, do you have--
Thank you.
Mr. Rivera, do you have any opening comments?
Yes, Regents, we presented on this as recently as last month where I talked to you about the new legal, the new law that provides for a new process of placing members, board members on the Board of Directors for the Neoces County Appraisal District. And so today, what you have, as you know, three of the current board members were elected back in May through a countywide election. And there are still board members on there, including one that you appointed to the board recently. But their terms will expire at the end of this calendar year, December 31, at which time five new positions will become open. But the way those positions are going to be filled will be through sort of an inter taxing unit, taxing unit election or appointment process where you will all be apportioned a certain number of votes. And again, we've covered this and, and you will vote on a ballot for up to five different folks. I believe it's in November. And the top five vote getters will, will be elected to the positions or appointed to the positions. But today, since there are five vacancies, as a taxing entity, you have the right to nom, to put up, nominate for placement on the ballot up to five names. You can do five, you can do less than five, you can do none, that's your prerogative. But, so today you have the, the opportunity to, to submit names for nomination. It'll have to be via a resolution. We've got a copy of it based on what you decide to do here in a moment. We did publicize it and, and made it available on our, on our college website for a bit. And there were two, two folks who expressed interest. Deanna Hevlin, who is the current Delmar appointee on the board, and Suzie Sullivan, who is the CCIS, one of CCISD's appointee on the board, but she also expressed interest.
Great, thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Rivera? Mr. Loeb, you have your mic on?
I'd like to make a motion that we nominate Deanna Hevlin, current representative.
Okay. Second, that motion, is there any discussion? Any public comment on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed, same sign, that motion passes unanimously. So we have a nomination for Ms. Hevlin and we'll submit that to the appraisal district. And we will see the ballot language back again for our November meeting and have a discussion on voting our shares depending on who else is on the ballot at that point in time.
Correct.
Great. We have, last item on our agenda is calendar. There's a couple of us going to the annual conference for the Community College Association of Texas Trustees. We'll be leaving at the end of this week for that meeting. In October, we have our scholarship dinner at American Bank Center and then regular board day on October 8th. We have our annual congress in Seattle on the 22nd. And for those who are not going to that, be sure and go to Viking Fest on the 25th. In November, we have our regular board meeting day on the 12th. You've received notice from Ms. Pettis to hold one of two dates. Right now, we're holding two dates, the 20th and the 21st of November, if possible, for a one-day retreat. We're not sure which day that's going to be yet. And Dr. Eskamia is going to tell us a little bit about that.
Correct, thank you, Madam Chair. Regents and staff, we are going to be trying to decide which one of those dates actually worked best. And I thank you for penciling both those. We're going to move very quickly, probably by tomorrow, make, make a determination. So I'm hoping for a full day's retreat. And I say I, I'm actually responding to you all, the board's request to do this, to set up this, this type of retreat. This type of retreat, as per my notes from our conversations together, really is about a, it's beyond visioning. It's not visioning in the, well, it's about looking forth. And, and the term that I've, that I really have in my head is the term that our chair used. It's about big picturing, big, you know, big picture kinds of forecasting thoughts and big long-term ideas about where the college could and should go. I mean, it's precisely what this, what this body's intention is by law and, and by mission. And that is to really present a big picture, long-term idea beyond what's in the five-year strategic plan, plan, to, to, to bring forth to the administration so that we can begin really articulating. Because looking forward five years, there's, there's a couple of things that's a bit, I'm going to say almost myopic, because one, every year, things change and we know that and we take it a year at a time, we have a structure for it. But we also know that five year, five years goes by in a flash. And as such, we're going to be pulling together an opportunity for us to come together and hopefully a, a, a very serious yet casual format, is that a contradiction of sorts, to really look forward into the future. And that's basically what it is. We're going to try to have it facilitated. We'll work on those details if that's the board's pleasure. But I'll be in close touch with our chair to facilitate that and prepare for one of those two days. Thank you.
Thank you. In terms of calendar, I also wanted to call to your attention the two handouts that we received on the Greater Tuna Play. That's going to be at the Sue Sellers Finley Theater. And the, the art show that's going to be at the Kane Exhibit, so the Kane Gallery. So I encourage you all to attend those if you can as well.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I also had on my calendar for October 8th, a potential walkthrough on the Heritage Campus. Is that no longer happening?
Nope, that is still happening.
Okay.
So that will be the morning, I don't, yeah.
Yes, I'm glad you brought that up. There's three, there's three locations on there, so it's going to be, bring comfortable shoes. And hopefully we'll have this air conditioning that just, just arrived a couple of days to make things easier. We'll, we'll watch that carefully for conditions and the like. It'll be time well spent. I can't wait to show you the development of, is it three or four, John?
I'm glad you're doing three buildings.
Three, okay, yeah, that's, that's better. And so stay tuned with that, we'll be in close touch. Thank you for that, Regent Everett.
So we'll be getting more information from Delia about that. But yeah, comfortable shoes. And then we'll come to lunch and have our regular board meeting. Great, anything else for the good of the cause? Seeing none, we are adjourned at 3:00 PM.